We'll begin with the pledge of allegiance followed by the invocation by the chair.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Your heavenly father, we give you thanks for the reign. We ask for you to be with us today to give us your wisdom and guidance. May all that we say and do here be pleasing in your side. We ask for your special watch over all those who celebrate the freedom and independence of our country. And all these things we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen.
This morning, the chair comments are limited to thanking the mayor and vice mayor and city staff. Substantial improvement and work has been done on the pending NDS agreement. And I look for Commissioner Dries's work, chairing the LEC Building Committee. That's some hard work, folks, and I wish you well in that continued endeavor. We will go straight to the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move the approval of the consent agenda as it is written.
Second.
We've seconded to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This morning, we have an opportunity for public comment. We have a nice crowd here today. Is anyone wishing to address the commission? Did anybody contact you, Dory?
No, sir.
All right, very good. We'll move on then and to the business items and start with Finney County twenty twenty-four dash seventeen. Please announce yourself for the viewing public.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Dante Thompson, a planner with Neighborhood and Development, and Pro State Surveying is requesting to plat the garden, excuse me, the Grand View Circle addition. The property is generally located at three oh six Grand View Circle of Finney County, Kansas. The property is currently zoned MR medium density residential district, and the property owner intends to construct a home on the lot. The proposed lot contains approximately point two seven acres and will be serviced by the Finney County Sewer District. There are all two alternatives in front of you. The governing body may approve the parcel plot, or two, the governing body may not approve the parcel plot. And the Planning Commission recommended approval of the plat on June twentieth, twenty twenty-four, and staff recommends approving the parcel plat. The applicant is also here, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Wonderful. Commissioners, do you have any questions for the planner?
Observation, I spent some time with, and thank you, I was on this plot. It would appear that the sewer line is not in the easement. Is that an issue?
There's a new easement with this plat that will put it in with an easement, correct?
But that's not going to cause a major problem for either party then?
No, no. We already have a site plan for the house, and it is without, it's outside of the easement, and it should be good to go.
My question is for the administrator. We have some work to do on the, what would be the southwest corner of this lot. The lift station is there approximately fifteen, eighteen, twenty feet in the ground. Does this easement give us the county adequate space to make those repairs and replacements?
Speaking with our engineers, we can make that work.
All right. Any other questions on this?
Mr. Chairman, and this is to the administrator as well, so, and this is kind of spinning off from what we talked about last meeting with regard to sewer hookups and so forth. So, in this particular case, and I know it doesn't, it's not germane specifically to this request for the plat, but they pay a hookup fee to be in the sewer district. Is that, am I understanding that correctly? Just so everyone knows that, that, that there's a, that the homeowner has some obligation to that?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Thompson or with regard to this parcel plat?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve Finney County twenty twenty-four dash seventeen parcel plat as presented.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve this parcel plat as presented. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'll sign the plat.
Thank you.
On our agenda is we have item sixteen. And a different presenter, please make sure you announce for the viewing public. Good morning.
Good morning. John Persisto with the Neighborhood Development Services. Pro State Surveying is requesting to plat the McGraw second addition. The property is generally located at one oh five, one five South Road seventeen, Finney County, Kansas. The property is currently zoned RR Rural Residential and is currently used for residential purposes. Lot one, block one contains plus or minus nine point five five acres. The second submittal was presented for plat review on May twenty eighth, twenty twenty-four and met requirements. There are two alternatives before you today. One, the governing body may approve the parcel plat, and two, the body, the governing body may not approve the parcel plat. And the planning, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the plat at the June twentieth, twenty twenty-four meeting, and staff recommends approving the partial plat.
Questions from the commission? I don't have any.
Question, have a comment, and I'll offer a motion if you're ready.
Go ahead.
To me, these, my comment is these circle corners are an ideal place to do just exactly what this plat is asking to do. Until we run out of water, and then when you don't have a pivot anymore, that's maybe a different issue. But with that comment, I'll offer a motion to approve the plat as it is presented.
Second. Been moved and seconded to approve the plat as presented. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Iron Insurance and Insurance Renewal Presentation. Are you ready to start docking?
Yeah, yeah. Trent Speck here with Iron Insurance Partners, formerly Keller Leopold. Thank you, Chair, Commissioners, and Finney County. I'm ready.
Very good. Reason why I say that is twenty-seven percent increase, and we go into a work session today where we had valuation, useful valuation for us for purposes of budgeting five hundred thousand dollars less than in twenty twenty-three, and I can explain that, but not on your time. Point is, is that we have less revenue, and you're raising our rates twenty-seven percent, and I always do it so that you can say, I'm not doing it. I'm just the messenger. Don't kill the messenger. But do you have some insight as to why travelers would be raising us twenty-seven percent? And don't tell me it's claims based because we haven't had any.
Yeah, I provided a PowerPoint. I don't know if we want to go through that or not. Okay, so, you know, Chair, I have a lot of people that come to me and say, hey, why is my insurance going up so much? What is, what is happening? And to be frank, the insurance marketplace is just what we call a dumpster fire. It's a, it's just kind of a mayhem. So, there's a, there's not a one size fit all answer, but my goal today is kind of just tell you about what we're facing on our side, on the insurance marketplace side. Tell you a little bit about travelers, and then tell you about how we're partnering with you at Iron Insurance about how we're trying to keep that, those rates low. So, the insurance marketplace, there's a lot of different variables that have been happening, but the best place to start is what, the hard market and soft market. So, the difference between a hard market and soft market, and I want to start there, is hard market, there's higher premiums. There's less, or restricted coverage, there's less competition. So, that's, that's a hard market. Soft market is complete opposite. You're looking at more supply and demand, there's increased competition, and there's broader coverage and lower premiums. So, the last six years, we've had four of the top losses, just insurance wide. Whether it's claims in California, Colorado, Florida, or hurricanes in Florida, you're looking at a deep Texas freeze. And I understand, I tell a lot of people, that shouldn't impact what's happening in Kansas, and I definitely understand. But the number of factors that go into that, we've never seen before. So, what I mean by that is a cause of inflation. Next slide, please. So, the cause of inflation, so laborers, labor materials, wages, profitability from those frequency and severity of claims. And then the reinsurance marketplace is probably the most significant. So, a lot of these carriers go buy reinsurance. So, they say travelers will go buy a stop loss nationwide, State Farm, Farm Bureau. And that has been hit so hard that they have no alternative but to raise the rates on the property side. And that's where the significant increase is coming from, which I'll get to here in a while. So, what does all this mean? What is, what is the increased weather events? What is a challenging reinsurance marketplace? Was the higher inflation all resulting in a harder market? So, travelers, they're getting real time data and saying, hey, we got to charge for this much. And for example, the city of Garden, you know, I sat and watched that on, that meeting. They were up thirty-six percent with the same carrier in January. So, it's just a, it's a super tough time. I say the twenty percent, you know, you got an insurance renewal. It used to be three to five percent. That was your normal. Well, anything under twenty percent right now, I'm calling a win. That's just, that's kind of the severity that we're seeing on our forefront. I just want to tell you one more quick story, but I had a, I had a manufacturing company that's local. And usually, you know, we have about ninety-five percent in the marketplace overall at Iron Insurance. We have a hundred plus employees throughout the state of Kansas. And we unturned every single rock. I mean, we went to twenty different carriers, and we said, hey, can you take a chance on this manufacturer? They had no claims in the last five years. And it took us to the day before to find coverage for them. So, used to, you know, we would have eight different carriers that would say, hey, let's look at that, you know, five years ago. Now, we had one carrier that said, well, I guess I'll take a chance this year. So, fast forward to what is happening with travelers, you know. They had a hundred and four percent loss ratio industry-wide in twenty twenty-two, and twenty twenty-three wasn't better. So, saying all that is they're seeing the real time data, so they're saying, hey, we got to adjust. We got to, our property is killing us. Not maybe in Kansas, but throughout the nation is killing us. We got to adjust. They have analytics on this. So, Finney County, for example, on the property side. So, in two thousand nineteen, we had seventy-five million dollars worth of coverage here that we were insuring for Finney County. Now, we have ninety-one million. So, inflation is causing that to go up. Replacement cost has, has increased significantly. The other part of that is the rate. So, the rates was twelve cents in two thousand nineteen. So, how you, how you find that, how much you're paying on premium is you take twelve cents times seventy-five million and then divide it by a hundred, and that'll give you a property coverage, or a thousand, excuse me. Fast forward to this year. Now it's twenty-one cents, twenty-one cents on the rate. So, they jumped significantly. We negotiated and got them down to twenty-one cents. They wanted to increase it to twenty-three cents. Autos, that's another item that's kind of running hot. Autos is, you know, three, five years ago, you would never have thought that autos would appreciate in value. But on the insurance side of things, you look at it and say, hey, if a two thousand eighteen vehicle gets damaged, it would cost, you know, fifteen, twenty thousand to replace compared to ten thousand, maybe five, six years ago with an older vehicle. So, they have to adjust their premiums based off of that. So, Finney County has a hundred and fifty-three vehicles on the policy, including twenty-two trailers. Eighty-seven vehicles have physical damage, so a little bit more than half. My understanding is I took this account over a couple of years ago, and the county's rule was anything under six years, we would cover for physical damage. Now, we're backing off to nine years just because of, like I mentioned, the auto rates are, or autos are almost appreciating or did appreciate in values there for a short time. So, those vehicles are costing more to replace in the event of a claim. So, they're saying, hey, we got to charge more to make sure that we are profitable. So, the rest of the policy, there wasn't a lot of change. I mean, there was a pretty significant change on general liability, but the others were not until you got to the DNO coverage. That was pretty significant just because it's been hit hard as I talked to the underwriter. So, they said they, they got to take rate. So, so what does Iron Insurance do for the county to help mitigate the cost? You know, we, we, number one, we reduce commissions. We said, hey, we don't think we should get paid more just because it's a hard market. So, we took a, we took a pay cut. Going forward, I talked to Dory and Robert about this last week and said, hey, we want to go to a fee-based strategy, which that's how our Salina office does business with the city and the county, is they do a fee-based. So, in a hard market like this, we shouldn't get compensated more. So, that's our, that's our goal going from twenty-four to twenty-five. We did negotiate on the property side. The property in actuality came back fifteen thousand more than what we showed, what you got premium summary from Dory. It was a, it was twenty-three cents on the rate. We negotiated it down to twenty-one. And back to that hard market, there's not a lot of people or carriers that want to take a chance on counties or municipalities or school districts. Anything that is property heavy, there's people just, or carriers are saying, we do not want property-heavy risk. But we did check a couple, or one market for sure, Chubb, who loves property. While everyone else is getting out of property, they're saying, we'll take a chance on it. But Chubb declined this year based off the lack of updates on a couple of buildings. They said because of lack of updates, we can't insure this. So, so what Finney County and Iron Insurance can continue to do? You know, we can't do anything about the property. Ninety-five, ninety-one million dollars is what's covered here in, or what we have on the policy through travelers. We can't do anything about the windstorm that comes through, the hailstorm that comes through, but we can lock the back door when it comes to our risk management. Having a sound safety culture, policies in place, and a great, great risk management design. So, anything from employee health and safety to claims advocacy, loss analysis, fleet management, and more. So, we've done a couple. You know, we worked, worked with Dory and her team on a couple of things, Kelly and her team on a couple of things, trying to get them into our system with showing our capabilities. So, we want to continue that and hopefully provide some risk management. So, any questions?
Well, I hope there are, so. The worst part about your presentation today being on July first, as we work right, go right into a budget session. And we start with a twenty-seven percent increase in insurance, and I'm going to make my statement and go on. Trent, you're a firm, and you have provided excellent service to the county for a number of years. But as its chair, I'll be looking for requests for qualifications and so forth, putting out feelers for what else can be done in this insurance market. So, you should know that. First of all, you and I are friends, and you golf extremely good, so much better than me. And I really value the Keller family in the tradition of trying to keep things local. So, we will start with that premise, and I'll turn it over to the rest of the commission. But we had thirty percent last year, twenty-seven percent this year, and no claims. That's hard to swallow, from my perspective.
Yeah, I, I looked at the claims overall, Chair, and a thirty-seven percent loss ratio over the last five years. We were running a touch hot last year, but I agree with you that this year we are in line with what we're seeing on other county and city that we represent. That is of significant size. We, the other county or city that we represent, one of them is thirty-seven percent, one is fifty-seven percent, which is very competitive and, and very good. That's what travelers likes to see.
Okay, so like travelers likes to see that, but I also see their presentation. They, they made three point one billion dollars on forty billion dollars of shares, sales in this area, resulting in eleven and a half percent increase for return for their stockholders. That's great. They're good capitalists, but they're doing it on our backs. All right. Questions for Trent, please, guys?
Mr. Chairman, I, one, there was a slide about ten back that said law enforcement up two percent. Remember the one I'm talking about? Public entity plus sixty-three percent. I don't quite understand the terminology there. Can you explain public entity, what, what we're talking about?
Yes, so, public entity management and public entity, or public entity employment practice liability. So, public entity management would be your DNO, so it protects you as a board. So, any decision that you make, if, if people try to sue the board individually or sue the county overall, you have protection there.
Maybe we used to call linebacker?
Linebacker is specific to EMC. That's what they call DNO coverage. Direct, is what you call directors and officers.
All right, thank you.
Go.
Questions? Are, you know, I've granted, you know, travelers is a nationwide company, and we're, we're paying for the hills in Florida and California, their fires and hurricanes. But aren't there any, are there any Kansas-based or Midwest-based insurance companies that base mainly get their revenue from the, the Midwest and not so much from either coast?
That's a great question. So, and that kind of goes back to the hard market, you know, and I don't want to bring in schools or the city or anything like that in. But on these big property risks, there used to be a lot more competition. But as time has went on, there's not have been, they have not been profitable with these big claims. So, there's been less competition coming. EMC, who represented the county for a number of years, we moved it to travelers, my understanding, about five, six years ago. We saved a hundred thousand dollars premium doing that, just one year. We saved a hundred thousand. So, EMC is a, is a Midwest, or Midwest, excuse me, based company out of Des Moines. But they just haven't been competitive on their property side.
What, what are, you said you guys reduced your premium, or your fees. Did you go down twenty-seven percent?
Not quite, probably. Not quite twenty-seven percent, but we did reduce it significantly, yes.
We appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman, Trent, thank you for your presentation, and I've been in your shoes before, not specifically on property and casualty, but from an insurance standpoint, so I understand what you wrestle with in the agency. My question, and Jerry is, is right to focus on the twenty-seven percent overall. But my focus is on the commercial property insurance, which is up sixty-seven percent. Because that's a huge factor in the twenty-seven percent overall increase. I did hear you say that you reached out to Chubb, but evidently felt like there were no other markets for the property, commercial property insurance. I also heard you say the evaluations are up from seventy-five to ninety-one million. The per, the cents per thousand up from twelve to twenty-three, or, excuse me, twenty-one. My question is this, though, is can we do anything with regard to deductibles? I heard what you said on the auto side, where you were already gone to nine years from six. But is there anything on the commercial property side from a deductible standpoint, or a coinsurance standpoint, or things like that that would get that fifty, sixty-seven percent down to even fifty percent or something? And would affect positively the twenty-seven percent overall?
Yeah, so, we have a two hundred fifty thousand dollar minimum deductible with travelers. So, that's pretty, pretty significant, and we had, we went from a one percent wind hell to a three percent this year. That's how bad the marketplace is when it comes to big property. I talked to Dory and Robert, and they kind of laughed at me, but it's kind of looking at some of these buildings and saying, hey, do we want to, do we want to self-insure? Or look at that going forward and saying, hey, we have a one million dollar building. Is it worth having? What's the cost efficiency, you know? Can we save ten, fifteen thousand by pulling that off, put that somewhere else? And say, hey, this is an older building? And that's not my top choice, obviously, because then you're, you're running the risk, right? But, I mean, we can always look at higher deductibles, but I mean, that high of deductible already for a wind hell claim is significant. Now, on the all other claims, you know, fire, vandalism, anything like that, we have a ten thousand dollar deductible, which is more in line of where we should be. But the wind hell, that's the biggest cause of claims out here, correct? I mean, so, there's, I mean, we can look at it, but there's probably, I mean, it's already so high, it's, it's be tough to save anything by going higher.
No, I, I appreciate that perspective, and I know that only so much can be done on deductibles, just even from their personal insurance side, that if we go from twenty-five hundred to five thousand, it doesn't mean a lot sometimes. And I do, I do understand the national implications of local insurance. I was talking to a, a commercial landlord just Saturday, and he's thinking about not insuring some of his buildings because of the amount of premium he's putting in if I put that in the bank for savings. So, I don't know if we can apply that. the bank for savings. So, I don't know if we can, uh, apply that principle here at the county more than two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. But we do that on the health insurance side with our stop laws and that kind of thing. So, that's just to put it in context for my question. Thank you.
All right. Anything else from the commission? All right. Trent, thank you very much for the bad news, but for the good presentation. Really appreciate your time and the work that you do for all of us.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Fannie County.
Do you need specific action?
Yes, we do today. The, this is a renewal. So, uh, commission will need to authorize a renewal of this, um, premium.
Mr. Chairman, I would, uh, make the motion to, for the renewal of six-hundred-and-fifty-five-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars, uh, for the twenty-three, uh, excuse me, for the twenty-four, twenty-five, uh, property and casualty premium.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the renewal cost as stated in the motion. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye abstain. Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, next on our agenda is, oh, I, I noticed that Mr. and Mrs. Fankous are here, and we've already approved your plot. Is there anything else you need?
That's it.
All right. Thanks for investing in our community.
Go hire an architect.
We have, uh, on our agenda, the KDOT eighty-three road transfer, including the, uh, oh, what's that thing called? The culvert or the box?
Oh, the pedestrian bike, um, pathway.
Aye. And, uh, I do want to personally offer our condolences to Kaylee, the person that helps with, uh, Public Works. And you can help me get his title correct, but...
He's in charge of operations there in Public Works.
And his, his mother died last Friday. So, our condolences out to Kaylee. And in his stead, we have today, please announce for the viewing public.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Mackenzie Phillips, Development and Administrative Coordinator. And then I also have with me, uh, one of our engineers from Kirkham Michael. So, I'll let him introduce himself.
Uh, I'm John Riggins, Kirkham Michael.
Hi, John. Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, I also have, uh, Trey Phillips, our GIS Coordinator. He's going to pull up some of the, um, online GI, GIS maps, so we can go over the certain sections of road that, um, will be handed over to the county and going over which ones are going to be asphalt, which ones are going to be gravel. So, uh, this morning, the commission is asked to consider the transfer of five miles of eighty-three highway from KDOT to the county following the completion of the highway upgrade. County shall consider participating in, also in the cost of a pedestrian pathway under the highway. So, uh, you have a few alternatives before you this morning. Um, the first is the county, uh, will accept the paved five miles, and it's about four to five miles. Uh, the second is county will reject the five paved miles. Uh, the third is the county will commit to the material costs to construct the pedestrian tunnel, and four, county reject participation in the pedestrian tunnel. Uh, so staff, or we'll go through all of the, uh, the maps first. Um, it is estimated that the future fiscal impact of maintaining these four to five miles is approximately three-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand per mile, uh, over a ten-to-twelve-year period. And the cost for constructing the potential pedestrian tunnel is, uh, approximately a hundred-and-fifty thousand, which, uh, we have been looking into different grant funding to see if we can, um, find alternative funding for that, for that pedestrian tunnel. But Trey, if you could pull up the maps.
Okay, to put a little bit into context, the new eighty-three project, we met with KDOT. They told us they had to have a decision by July fifteenth. We have one more regular session that if we can't reach a consensus today, we can hit it again on the fifteenth. But with that, I would like to see what we can do as far as consensus building or perhaps a decision. And please proceed with the presentation on the number of miles that they're gonna turn over to us.
Okay. Do you want to do it, everybody? Okay. Okay, so we'll start, uh, on the, the very north end of the project over by Burnside. So, uh, as you can see on the map, anything that's going to be, uh, that's in blue, that is going to be the new constructed, uh, eighty-three. So, anything in black, uh, you're gonna see that's the, um, what's going to be handed over to the county that is going to be asphalt. Anything in, is it like a, it's like a grayish-brown color, is going to be gravel. Uh, so on this portion right here, you can see Burnside will be, uh, relocated. And on the east side, or west side, I apologize, the west side, it will be asphalt. And on the east side, it will be gravel. Uh, so that green line that you're seeing, right, that green dashed line, that is where the, um, proposed future trail is, uh, supposed to be located at. So, where you see it crosses over that, that blue section of road, that is where the proposed pedestrian tunnel would be located at. So, um, all of that yellow area that you're seeing, it, the, the files that we did receive from KDOT, they didn't show all of the area that's going to be eradicated. There's so much that it was, it muddled up the maps a little bit. So, I'll just go over like what is going to be eradicated. So, that yellow area, um, is going to be eradicated, and, uh, KDOT is going to maintain right-of-way within that area. So, then we get into this red portion, um, that is also going to be eradicated, um, as well as that anything in red and anything in yellow there is going to be eradicated. So, um, you do see the new entrance for Southwind there. It's not marked on the map, but that is going to be, uh, county responsibility. And it will be asphalt.
The blue going into Southwind will be our, our responsibility to build?
Not to build. We, it will be handed over, yeah, to maintain. It will be handed over to the county after it is constructed. So, going south, again, anything in red and yellow is going to be eradicated. Um, the blue is the, the new portion, or the new eighty-three. Um, so, go down a little farther, Trey. Thank you. Uh, on the west side, that is the Miller entrance. That is going to be gravel. That is not going to be asphalt. On the, um, east side, that is another entrance to, uh, connect to Southwind. That portion is going to be asphalt and then connecting down to Brookover Ranch. Um, all of that will be asphalt. So, going farther down, again, anything in yellow is going to be eradicated. Anything in blue is go, is the new, uh, location of the road. So, here we see, can you zoom in just a little bit, please? Thank you. Um, that is going to be the entrance to, uh, Buffalo Dunes. That is going to be asphalt. And then on the east side, we have, uh, it's an entrance for a field. So, it is going to be gravel. So, here, uh, this, it gets a little, uh, muddled. Uh, you do see, if you can see the, the black line in between the red, the red is indicating that they are going to be eradicating the shoulders or a portion of the shoulders. And then they are going to keep the, um, that this is a portion of the current eighty-three, so it will be asphalt. It does end in a cul-de-sac there on the north side. Uh, after that cul-de-sac, we do, we would not be responsible for anything after that. So, we would be responsible for maintenance, anything from the cul-de-sac south. And again, that is all going to be asphalt. So, anything that's on the current location of, uh, eighty-three, that will be handed over to the county, that all will be asphalt because it is currently asphalt. So, um, you see right south of, what road is that? Can you zoom in, please, Trey? That's Annie Shear. So, down south of Annie Shear, it stops right there as it, it goes, you, you can see that kind of curve up there. So, it's asphalt all the way to that person's driveway, and then it, the rest will be eradicated, um, until you get down to, oh, actually, before we go down that way, um, Annie Shear, uh, you'll see on the east side of the new eighty-three, there is going to be a gravel entrance to that person's, uh, uh, property.
If we could go back up, please. My comment here is, is that from that area around the homes of the old Highway eighty-three, what will now be the older Highway eighty-three, that, the solid red line going south is where it's, it's going to be eradicated.
Correct. Yes. And then north of that, it's just the shoulders that are being eradicated.
That's so everybody has access to the hard surface of that area.
Correct. Okay.
Please continue.
So, going further south. Okay, so this is where, um, we, is that, is that parallel road? Yeah, thank you. So, this also will be asphalt on the west side where the old location of eighty-three. Um, they do stop the, uh, going south of parallel, they do stop the asphalt, and then they restart it lower on. This was to prevent, um, it becoming a drag strip or for people going on that portion of road instead of going on eighty-three. There really isn't any other access to that portion of road that would take people off of eighty-three. They'd still really need to go on eighty-three. And, uh, Kay, uh, Kaylee and I have talked a little bit about this, of whether we should just keep it going all the way straight through for, uh, it, it's easier for maintenance purposes, um, instead of just eradicating that, that one section. So, uh, we did want to talk about that a little bit because going south, um, so that solid red portion is the part, portion that they're, uh, proposing to eradicate. And then it starts again and goes south all the way down to, um, where it looks to appear to meet up with the new eighty-three, but it does eradicate right before getting to that part. So, that is one, um, area of consideration, uh, the, the board should, should look at is possibly keeping me, keeping that portion for few, to help with future maintenance, um, or not. It, it, that one is up to the board's decision. So, that is all of the areas of road that are going to be proposed to be given over to the county. Do you have any questions about any other areas along there?
Mackenzie, what costs more to, um, to keep the blacktop or the current eighty-three as is, or to eradicate it and change it over to gravel? Which one's easier to maintain?
Gravel, yes.
By how? Quite a bit?
A substantial amount, yes. We do, uh, produce our own gravel, so we don't have the, that cost of the, the materials, the oil. Um, I don't know. Do you have costs?
For exactly what, I guess, or like a type of...
Well, if you, if you're talking, we're talking about that long stretch of blacktop there, the, from parallel south to Pierceville, or Plimeel. Anyway, it's, uh, it appears to me that, you know, you've got, you're leaving a lot of blacktop there for two people, two, two homes are there.
Mm-hmm.
Why not eradicate that whole stretch?
And so, I talked to, uh, Rogan with KDOT a little bit about this. We had a, a Zoom meeting last week. Um, especially that, that portion that has that, that cul-de-sac that goes up to the north, that, uh, it only, is it an entrance for one homeowner, uh, to get to. So, we, we talked about the possibility of possibly taking that from asphalt and, um, milling it up and, and putting it back to gravel. Uh, they said that, and, uh, John might be able to speak a little bit more on this, but it, it, it kind of goes against the KDOT's practices of their typical practices. Usually, they have, they asphalt, um, up to that, the, the right-of-way line for that property owner. Um, and this property owner did ask for it to be extended a little bit farther to the north, is my understanding, so that they didn't have to maintain such a long driveway. Uh, so, they've already had those discussions with the, the property owner. Uh, they've already gone through all of the, um, right-of-way, uh, acquisition. Thank you, John. And, and so, if we, if, if the, if the board wanted to request it to be gravel, it would take a substantial effort on KDOT's side to, to get that all figured out. So, do you have anything to add on that?
Not necessarily. I mean, just the cost, like Mackenzie referred to in Robert, the cost of maintaining two different surfaces and jumping from asphalt to gravel and back and forth is much more difficult. And, uh, smaller the, shorter the lengths and the like for asphalt, uh, the, you know, prices get driven up as well.
When you're talking about eliminating the shoulders, how, the whole shoulder, or you're gonna leave a little, there's surely got to be some type of edge on the blacktop.
They talked about two feet, as I recall.
Yeah.
That's what they...
Yes, there's gonna be about two feet. They're just, um, narrowing down the shoulders.
Okay, my ten cents worth is, is that why wasn't the homeowner granted access to the highway? And why are we maintaining nearly, uh, a little more half-mile of, uh, hard surface road for one resident?
The policy for KDOT is that they try to reduce the number of intersections or merging off or onto the highways. They, they, they believe that's, the increases the safety of the traveling public to do that. Um, as far as maintaining that for one, that one person, I...
That has to go back to gravel. We can't forever have an asphalt road for one residence. That doesn't make any sense. And two is, is that KDOT, uh, doesn't like intersections. I get that. But this is a tremendous cost to the taxpayers of over a half-mile of hard surface road to accommodate one residence.
Mr. Chairman? Four and a half miles, point seven-six for the whole.
For the whole thing, yeah.
That, you know, that is my question. You know, why, why are we even maintain, why are we leaving any of it blacktop?
And it...
I know it's KDOT policy to, that doesn't mean it's right.
And a, a lot of the reason is because it is currently asphalt. And so, is, it, it's a significant increase in cost for KDOT to go through and eradicate that and then put it in, as gravel. So, that was part of the reasoning as well.
Part of the new existing road, they decided to move the whole road. So, that's on them and not...
Let's, let's follow up on that. Does KDOT pay for the removal of the asphalt, or is that on us?
It'll be done through the project for, for the, when the eighty-three is realigned. So, KDOT would pay for that.
Let's, let's ask the generic question amongst the five of us. Would we agree to build a road? If there hasn't an existing highway, would we agree to build a road to that residence and not, uh, tax the owners the cost of that road? No.
Not an asphalt road.
Correct. So, why are we doing it by default because, uh, KDOT wants to move the highway? Which they had access to that highway, the old highway before, and they're denying them access to the new highway. It seems to me that the shift that KDOT wants us to do is us to assume the maintenance and so forth of three-quarters of a mile of highway for their convenience. Uh, and it really greatly affects the compensation that they would otherwise have to provide to those landowners for cutting off their access and shifting that cost to the county. Now, have I missed anything?
Mr. Chairman, I, um, if you're complete with your thought...
I am, sir.
Uh, well, first of all, I would not be in favor of having part of it being asphalt, part of it being gravel, to John's comment. That creates a maintenance headache. Second...
Secondly, so to me, it needs to be all gravel or all asphalt. And I'm very sensitive to the costs going forward because it's not just the initial cost, it's the cost going forward. I also heard being said that KDOT had negotiated this end with the landowner that it would stay, part of that would stay as asphalt. Did I hear that correctly?
Well, maybe they should pay for the maintenance then, since they negotiated it.
But my question is, what if we went back to KDOT and said, let's eradicate that whole thing, but let's use the millings instead of just gravel? Because our experience out in our subdivision is the millings really hold well, but they don't take near the maintenance that asphalt does, but they hold better than the gravel that we would have to maintain as well. Is there any appetite for that? Would that create this tangled thing with KDOT and the landowner if we went, tried to do something in that approach?
I've heard the same statements that you just said about the KDOT making the agreement with the landowner. I don't know, I'm not privy to landowner agreements or anything like that, and I assume that it would cause some chaos or headaches for KDOT if they did make a promise for the landowner to leave it an asphalt road. I mean, if that was part of their right-of-way, their agreement to acquire the right-of-way, then...
Well, and to make my position clear, I just don't think we worry about an all asphalt, asphalt road for the speeding, the race dragging. If that becomes an issue, we tear out a piece of it and we stop that. But to me, it's either all gravel, all millings, or all asphalt, not a combination of those two things. That's my position, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any other comments? We're really looking for some kind of consensus and decision as to the assumption of maintenance of that area. And I'm going to turn to the administrator. For instance, this three-quarters of a mile on this property right north of Annie Shear Road, what's the approximate cost per mile of maintaining that road?
Over a ten-year period, per mile is just a little over three hundred thousand dollars.
So approximately thirty thousand a year per mile.
Correct.
If I do my math correctly, twenty-four thousand dollars a year to the county to maintain this point seven-six miles as proposed.
Well, now, Mr. Chairman, I'm confused also because I'm looking at the narrative we have and it says for the five miles, approximately three hundred and twenty-five thousand a mile for ten to twelve-year period. So I'm thinking Robert is referring to the entire five miles.
That's not correct. It's per mile. It's a per mile.
Well, excuse me, but, okay. So, okay, you were asking just for a breakout. All right, I'm the one confused, so, yeah, go ahead and talk about me, so.
Well, if you combine the landowner's valuation on their home and that circle of ground and the other area of valuation, we're losing a lot of money as taxpayers of keeping that in that condition. It's got to go back to gravel and it's still going to be expensive, all because they didn't want to grant access that they had at the time of the rework of eighty-three.
Mr. Chairman, can't we include that other four miles south, all gravel all the way? Why do we need to keep that as blacktop? There's less.
There isn't, but the area, if I understand it correctly, and our presenters can address that issue, Commissioner Dreese is saying, why can't it just be all gravel and go on?
Correct.
Can it?
I mean, there is nothing that would be, that would prevent the county from graveling the road instead of using a hot mix asphalt. I mean, it's, again, it's the cost, it's the convenience, it's the level of service that some people would expect. And again, I'm not exactly sure if there was any deals struck during the right-of-way acquisition between KDOT and the landowner. That could, I mean, throw a monkey wrench into it if there was deals made and an agreement or that was part of the acquisition.
Yeah, the challenges that we'll probably face is that KDOT is, has promised this to be asphalt and then the extra cost that they're going to come back with. So, but we can definitely extend that to KDOT saying that this is what the board wishes to have done and see what happens.
All right. Do we want to tackle the abandonment issue before we go on to the box culvert?
Well, I think...
We just need action to make a recommendation to KDOT on these four-point-five miles of roads.
Yeah, and I think just to make it clear to Robert and Mackenzie and John, I think our desire is to go back to gravel.
On all of it?
On all of it, yeah, right. From what I'm hearing here. So then that's where the negotiation over the next week or two begins.
Make that motion and let's go ahead and send that to...
He prods you.
She's got...
I moved it...
Is it okay if I make one comment before you make a motion? Okay, so you're saying all of it to be gravel. Are you talking about just that southern part and not that part to the north where it's going to be like the Southwind entrances?
I'm talking about all the old Highway eighty-three that they are leaving abandoned, an entire stretch from the south point at the curve all the way up to the residence on the north.
Okay, thank you.
Approximately the south end of Buffalo Dunes to the south end of the project.
Correct.
We're not talking about the Southwind entrance that's going to be hard surface.
Thank you for the clarification.
Is that your motion, sir?
My motion is to recommend that we not accept the blacktop road for that stretch of miles at five and whatever and return it to gravel road.
From south of Buffalo Dunes Golf Course to the south end of the project.
Correct.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Moved and seconded to recommend to KDOT that these be gravel roads south of Buffalo Dunes to the south end of the project. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Four to one, motion carries. The next thing that we want to cover is the box culvert. Mackenzie, you have said that that has a cost to the county of a hundred and fifty thousand. That's the cost of goods. KDOT will provide the labor and everything else associated with that. We just need to commit the hundred and fifty thousand, correct?
Correct.
I don't think there's any support for that, but I'll let the commissioners have their comment on it and then we'll make a motion for recommendation to KDOT.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I see that somewhat as a bridge to nowhere. If you have the box culvert there, there's no trail hooking to either end of it. And so the next thing after the expense of the box culvert is the expense of a trail. And I don't know that we have the fortitude or the budget to do either. So if somebody else wants to come along and build a trail and reimburse the county for both a box culvert and a trail, I'd support them. Otherwise, I don't, I don't support this idea.
Mr. Jones?
I just believe that, you know, there's a current box under the, under the road now. How often is it used?
Well, they don't have the...
Probably none, that I would guess, just saying other it collects tumbleweeds and coyotes.
Possibly used for cattle passage.
I don't even know, I don't even think they do that anymore. Yeah, unless somebody really, or some trail organization really wants to be involved in this deal and pay for the material to build the box, I'm kind of like Commissioner Dave Jones that this is a non-starter for me.
Comments, Mr. Pusney?
I probably will be the lone vote for this. However, I am not for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in one budget year. And it's my understanding from what Robert told me in conversation the other day, what I heard Mackenzie say today, that there is the possibility of some grant funding if KDOT would agree to a multi-year payment of the hundred and fifty thousand, then I would be in favor of this. And I got encouragement to support this from a resident at Southwind. Because of connectivity, and yes, Dave's right, there's no trail there now, but trails, if we can get that culvert in there, those are eligible for grants and we were turned down on one. But I don't think the viability of that initial request was significant enough where this, the location of this, I think the viability would be better for grant support. So I just, thinking into the future for connectivity to all the residents south of the bypass or of eighty-three highway, I think it makes sense, but only if it can be multi-year funding and only if we go out after other sources than general budget.
I think I'm probably somewhere in middle here. If I recall from our discussion six, seven years ago when this came up, this was about an eight hundred thousand dollar dream to put a bike trail from Southwind. The things that stopped it were number one, the culvert, and number two, no way to cross the river. My understanding is the new south, new west bridge does have a pedestrian or slash bike crossing across.
What I understand, yeah.
So I could be talked in for long-term putting the culvert in there, but I am not in favor of spending eight hundred thousand dollars to create a bike trail.
Somebody guarantee the grant. You know, if it's paid out over ten years is fine, but I mean, I've got to see a written guarantee that somebody's going to pay for the material other than the rest of the taxpayers in Finy County.
I guess my point is the bridge will have a bike trail.
Bike trail to nowhere.
Bike trail to nowhere. So...
Folks, I'm going to interject only to the extent that I live out at Southwind. It is in this commissioner's district and I haven't had but one Southwind resident tell me that this box culvert is a good idea. Many Southwind residents don't want bicycles out there anyway. They already have plenty of traffic. Two is, is that the box culvert without anything there is going to be a tumbleweed and rattlesnake catch device. Three, four, five, and six are all non-positive reasons that I don't want to delve into. And I think that clearly the people, a majority, not all, don't want to spend this money. And secondly, if somebody does want to do that cost, they got about thirteen days to let us know before a decision has to be made and given to KDOT on the fifteenth. So I would ask that we table this box culvert until the fifteenth to give anybody an opportunity to address the commission, Mackenzie or Robert Reese, the administrator, of the desire to fund this box culvert. And if not so doing, then it looks to me like the commission may or may not approve it.
And Mr. Chairman, I agree with those instructions, but I would simply ask that we add that Mackenzie and Robert and/or provide us with some potential funding opportunities, specific, like what grants do they know are out there or an idea to spread it over five, ten years or something of that nature? Just in helping us come to our conclusion.
All right. Well, for now, we'll table this with the consent of the commission. We'll take it up on the fifteenth and make a decision and let KDOT know. And if anybody wants to fund this box culvert or a group of folks, now's your chance to get it done. I know it's a short period of time. This has been in the works for eight years, so it's not like we're doing it on short notice. Anything else on this issue? All right, thank you, Mr. Administrator Mackenzie and Mr. Engineer. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
We will... Mr. Administrator, Robert, can you go ahead and notify KDOT of our decision with regard to the four and a half, or the mile south of Golf Course? And also we'll give them a final decision on the box culvert on the fifteenth. Would you communicate that to them?
Yes, yes, sir.
All right, very good. All right, let's go to board governance. Dory, do we have anything addition to what's published in the meetings and events?
One thing I didn't get added in there would be the upcoming candidate forums and the candidate meet and greet, and those are for the county commission seats and also the sheriff seat. Those are the, there's three races that are contested. That meet and greet is on Thursday, the eleventh.
Seven eleven, at what time and where?
One second. Okay, thank you, Vicky. Six p.m. at the Clarion on Thursday, the eleventh.
And candidate forum?
No, I'm getting it pulled up.
It's six p.m. for the county commission, six p.m. on the sixteenth at the city office or city building.
Say that again, please, Lon.
Six p.m. on Tuesday, the sixteenth at the city building for the county commission candidates and six p.m. on the eighteenth for the sheriff candidates at the city building.
That actually will not be at the city building. It's here in this, in these chambers.
Oh, did they change it? Because I didn't see a notification for the change.
The information I have says that it's at the Finy County Administration Building, so it will be here in these chambers.
That's changed since the notice went out, yeah.
Yeah, I'll verify with Micah and let you know.
Sixteenth and eighteenth, though, are the dates.
Yes, the sixteenth and eighteenth.
The eleventh is not a candidate forum.
It's not a forum, it's a meet and greet.
Just meet the candidates at the Clarion.
Who's the sponsor of that?
Chamber.
Chamber.
Garden City Chamber is also sponsoring the forums.
All right, very good. So to put that into final detail for announcement purposes, the meet and greet of the candidates will be six p.m. at the Clarion sponsored by the Garden City Area Chamber of Commerce. We will have a candidate forum for the county commission candidates on July sixteenth here in these chambers. Then again, on the eighteenth of July, the sheriff candidates will have a candidate forum here on the eighteenth of July, all at six p.m. Did I get it all right?
You did. Thank you for filling in the gaps, everyone. I also wanted to mention that July sixteenth is the deadline for voter registration, just for the public's information. If you want to vote or need to update your address, you'll need to do that by July sixteenth.
Well, let's get everybody out to vote and get registered properly and encourage people to vote. Is there any advance voting in this primary?
Yes, as always, we will begin on July twenty-second, which is about two weeks prior to Election Day. Yes, July twenty-second. That'll be from nine a.m. to four p.m. weekdays here in this building at the election office. We will have one evening vote. I believe that is on, I just did not come prepared today. I believe that evening vote is going to be on July thirtieth. And then we'll have a Saturday vote on August third. That'll be from ten a.m. to two p.m. So lots of opportunities for people to come vote on their lunch hour, in the evening on a Saturday.
We encourage everyone to be registered, everyone to vote on the times stated by the clerk. And we will then go on to staff reports. And Mackenzie, you're back up with development update, please.
Good morning again. Mackenzie Phillips, Development and Administrative Coordinator. I don't have much of an update for you this morning, but I wanted to bring attention to, I did get some updated aerial imagery. Our Tom with our GIS department went and flew some new aerials, so I did want to bring those up real quick. Sam, can you go down a couple pages, please? Thank you. So this is a country... Thank you. So, this is Country Acres Phase One. You can see the road infrastructure in place now. Then, Sam, go down a couple pages, please. As well as Randall Estates. They're still working on some of their roads, but this gives you an idea of what the shape is looking like. And then, a couple more pages. And then, as well as Western Kansas Corridor. So, do you have any questions for me this morning?
Chairman, I do. McKenzie, this is probably after the fact on all three of these projects, but is the county going to be responsible for maintenance of these roads in all three of these projects after they are constructed or is that on the developer?
Correct. We will be responsible for maintenance after a one-to-two-year period. Some of them are one, some of them are two-year periods. So, the developer will be responsible for maintenance during that maintenance period, and then after that, the county will take over the maintenance of those roads. As well on Country Acres that, that tract that the drainage or detention pond is at, that is also going to be the responsibility of the county.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions on development? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Administrator, you have a report, sir.
Just a short one for you. We do have a meeting with Goldberg Group tomorrow at nine o'clock, go over the Health Department EMS project. And then, the tenth, July tenth, Justice Planners will be in town with a review of their data gathering that they went through here just a few weeks ago. So, those will be, put that on your calendar for the two commissioners going to that. And then, and then as we're going through budget today, that's primary focus.
Next, your report on the Health Department and EMS. I think you have a more detailed update on that building project.
Yes. Can you go ahead and scroll up to, I think we got some of the pictures. They, this, this is a floor plan that was worked on the last time they were here. Once again, the approximate square footage is approximately twenty-seven thousand square feet. Both staff and commissioners massaged this project to this point at this time. And then, I think we do have some outside renditions of it. And once again, this is at first blush, so if you'll keep scrolling down there, some various views of that facility. Continue, Sam. This would be the entrance into the Health Department. That would be off of Mary Street. The bottom is kind of an angled view of that from the corner of Eighth and Mary. This is the entrance area to EMS on the top picture, and the bottom texture is a much broader view from the, once again, the corner of Eighth and Mary. This will be the backside. The, what you'll see there is the bunk rooms there for EMS, living quarters. Okay. And I believe that is what we have for you today. We're refining the budget on that and we'll go through that during the budget work session.
Very good. Mr. Dreese, Commissioner Pishney, you guys are liaisons on those committees. How's this work out in your opinion?
Mr. Chairman, I am rather quite pleased with the presentation here they made of the exterior of the building. I think, and they've spent considerable amount of time on the floor plan, but I'm thinking that's not the latest update on the floor plan.
We should have one tomorrow.
Okay. But overall, I am pleased with the concept of how the building is coming together.
And Mr. Chairman, my comment would echo what Dwayne said and add simply that this project, as I believe all of our county projects, are not too focused on building Taj Mahal, but to focus on a building that's functional for whatever is, is going to be housed within it. And in this particular case, a lot of conversation and study has gone into workflow and so forth for the Health Department, for EMS, the possibility of expansion of the EMS, the ambulance garages if, if needed, and discussion on whether there's property to do that if, if that's necessary sometime in the future. The health of our EMS workers, the well-being, of mental and physical well-being of each of the workers as well. So, I'm, as Dwayne said, pleased with the discussions that I've been hearing. And there's been discussion from administration, from both staffs and particularly Commissioner Dreese as far as functionality and workflow.
Very good. Thank you, gentlemen. Anything else on the Health Department EMS building? If not, we'll move on to the...
Questions?
Yes.
It will store how many? Four ambulances is the way it looks like from the...
Yes, it will, it will hold four. It's not, in my understanding, it intends to put that many in there, but it will double stack four ambulances.
Okay, and they, they will exit onto Eighth Street, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
I didn't...
That is supposed to be a dedicated drive.
This whole, I mean, the, plenty of parking for employees to park out of the congested area?
Correct. We'll have a parking plan for that. Should have that on Tuesday. I think we saw a preliminary of that last meeting. So, yes, there'll be dedicated public parking and for employees.
Yeah.
I see Skylar standing there. Do you have any observations or comments you would like to make, sir?
Yeah, I just wanted to talk about...
Hold on. Get to the mic. So, one of the chief complaints I get, and it's not you, Skylar, it's all of us, is the viewing public can't hear us. So, thank you. Start again, sir.
Skylar stores, Director of EMS. Yeah, so the, the garage is, is too double stacked. We intend to put one ambulance in one side that will always be a drive-through. That's going to be our main unit. And then, there will be a, in the second drive, there are a second garage, there'll be the backup unit and then a place to park the admin vehicle. And so, there'll be, that'll, that'll be double stacked there. But one of those will always be free open so that the main unit never has to back in to the garage. It's always a drive-through for it. And so, we currently have six ambulances, so the goal is to have two ambulances stored at each station between the main station, the joint fire EMS station, and Holcomb.
Any other questions for Skylar on the building?
Are you any way concerned with exiting onto Eighth Street instead of Mary?
No, not, not, not yet, I guess I should say. I don't have a problem with it. It's fairly close to, if we have to get to Mary, it's fairly close to that intersection and it's, it's, that'll be, I believe it'll be a more open area to be able to freely pull in and out as opposed to trying to pull out onto Mary Street with the possibility of a backup due to the light. But I don't, I don't have any concerns about it, at least not now.
All right. Anything else?
Yes, sir.
Is there any, has there been any discussion of control on that traffic light at Eighth and Mary when, when you guys are going? Can you get somebody to make us, throw a switch and turn it all red?
We have the opticons on our units, and I'm, I'm pretty sure that, that particular light is, has the sensor for that. But we have opticons in all our units that will turn, turn the lights as we get close.
Okay.
Anything else? All right. Thank you, Mr. Director. Appreciate it. We'll go ahead and go to the county counselor report. Madam Counselor?
Had some more forward progress with the tax foreclosure sale. We've had some more payments come in. The, I did just get a call on Friday from one gentleman who's one of the more significant ones, who says that he should have something worked out this week to be able to pay that. Hopefully, that comes in prior to the need to file. I'm just waiting on a little bit more information before filing those. And then, we do have an executive session for attorney-client matters. It's on the agenda for this morning as well. For that session, we'll need the administrator, the assistant administrator, and McKenzie Phillips, as well as myself.
All right. Commissioners, do you want to take up your reports or move to the executive session? I think we ought to do the executive session and finish up with our reports.
Can we fit in on a three-minute break?
We, we will. Let's entertain a motion for an executive session with the administrator, assistant counselor, and McKenzie Phillips for a period of time for twenty minutes until ten oh five. Is there such a motion?
So, move, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
Move to second, go into executive session with the presence of people indicated. Is there further discussion? And the purpose of the meeting?
Attorney-client matters.
All right, very good. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, we'll be in executive session. We'll be back at five after ten. Opposed, we'll be in executive session. We'll be back at 5:10. Opposed, we'll be in executive session. We'll be back at 5:10. Return to regular session and out of executive session?
Oh, move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, back in regular session. No action was taken in executive session, and we'll conclude today by our commission reports. And we'll go right to left. Vice Chairman?
Had several meetings with the city on the NDS agreement, and I think we're making progress. Also, had a meeting on economic development several times on the proposed education opportunities in western Kansas for four-year education. Those were quite interesting. Other than those two, that's, I think that's it.
You were also appointed to the board for the-
Oh, life, Economic Lifelines Board, which is, basically is a lobbying group for the contractors to the legislatures to make sure and represent our area, that we get our share of the KDOT funding and things from the legislature.
Thanks for agreeing to serve on that important board. Commissioner Pishney?
Oh, not too much to report. Been in some of the meetings with regard to EMS and health, the law enforcement center. But also, I did attend the ribbon cutting at the airport the other day where Senator Moran came and provided some comments. And I don't have anything else.
All right, very good. Mr. Dreese?
No report. I've been kind of farm-bound for three weeks.
You're welcome for all the rain, says our maker and creator.
We prayed hard. Thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
Very short report. Had a library board meeting, which was typical. Not anything very different going on there. And then we had a waste management meeting. And we'll have a report down the road on rewriting the five-year plan for waste management. That's it.
All right, my report is that I did attend the NDS discussions. They were very good, and I think we have a plan. And we'll continue to work forward. I also attended the educational opportunities meetings. This was an interesting time, and I look forward to all the exciting things that are happening in our community. I don't have any further comments. Then we are going to have a work session immediately following this general session. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Mr. Chairman?
Okay.
Then moved to second, we adjourn, we'll take up the work session immediately. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we're adjourned. Thank you all.